If you would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a sincerely public for which stands one nation under our individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Councilor Donovan.
President.
Councilor Rowan.
Here.
Councilor Foley.
Here.
Councilor St. Clair.
Here.
Councilor Hayes.
Here.
Councilor Chiazo.
Here.
Chairman Baybine.
Here. And the only item on tonight's order is order number seventeen dash oh sixty-three, second reading on the fifty-year two thousand eighteen municipal and school budget as presented by the town manager. Before we begin and open it up to comments, public comments, I do want to give notice that we only have about an hour timeframe this evening because there is a school board meeting immediately afterwards in which they will be taking up the issue of their cost reductions. So we would like to be mindful of the time restrictions that we do have, but I would now like to open it up to any public comments. If you'd like to make a comment, if you could please come up to the podium, state your name and your address, it would be appreciated. Go ahead, sir.
This is a new day. Well, I'm Karen Durda. I'm from Six Haste Circle, and thank you for the hard work and keeping the One Town, One Budget initiative forward moving and continually consistent. I urge you not to deviate from the principles established, and I'm thankful for your demonstrated verbal commitment to keep school funding commensurate with what is required by this Scarborough of ours. Just want to take a couple of minutes and at least tell you what is this requirement by the Scarborough of ours as I see it that I think you need to translate it to paper. It is to progressively entrench a sense of economic development and job creation contingent on the education of our kids. Scarborough is lagging a little behind in this. See how the towns of Sanford and South Portland are articulating that they understand economic development drivers and its linkages to a healthy education pipeline of talent and know-how. I urge you to do that. This entire world of broader main-based discussion and conversations that I'm well part of, and let me assure you that the current Scarborough situation has an inertial break on what will potentially yield generational dividends. Policy approaches of tax reduction and cost-cutting, I leave for better angels who are hopefully well-informed beyond their own ideological limitations, including mine. But I do want to urgently and vociferously point out that the divisiveness of our community can be healed by facts, due lack of insistent robocaus and jettisoning of coercive approaches. So lead. Please lead. Fund as you feel is appropriate and to the levels that is required. Let go of the gentrification of thought, erase this toxicity, divisively renew our faith in this social contract that is eroding, and keep me as a taxpayer living in this town. Thank you. Be well.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak? Anybody else? Going once, twice? We'll close the public comment. What I would like to do is invite Superintendent Kukunberger to the podium for a overview of, we had a conversation before regarding a online survey that was conducted by her department, so if she can give us some details on that, that would be great.
I did create a presentation that'll be available on our website that is basically an executive summary of the seven hundred and twenty responses that we received to our quick community feedback regarding the budget vote. And so the intent behind the survey, I said this at the first reading meeting, and since then, at that time we had like four hundred and ninety-six responses, since then we've gotten a couple hundred more. I think it's important to clarify that this is not scientific. It's something I made up just to hear our community better and to understand why folks were coming out to vote or not, and if they were supporting the budget, why, and if they weren't supporting the budget, why. So it was really just an opportunity for us to gain a little more insight and to create opportunity for voice with our stakeholders. And so I just remind us of that because again, as I'm sharing this data, I want to make sure that we're not relying heavily on this as like the source of data. Obviously, we had over four thousand voters. There were seven hundred and twenty people who were able to respond to this quick survey, so not, again, not a definite representation of our community. So who did actually take the survey? We had, like I said, seven hundred and twenty responses, and sixty-point-seven percent of the responses were community members who currently have children enrolled in the schools. The next largest group of responders were Scarborough residents who are fifty-five or older, at twenty-point-one percent. And then we had twelve-point-two percent of the respondents who were residents who do not have any school-aged children at all. One-point-eight percent are residents with children who, school-aged children, but they're not enrolled in our schools. And then the rest are just in a category of other, includes some faculty who took the survey as well because it went out through our internal email. So of the seven hundred and twenty responses, eighty-three, I'm sorry, eighty-four-point-three percent, or I'll just round the numbers to make it easier to hear, I know it's hard to sometimes process all these numbers over auditorily. But eighty-four percent of the respondents said, yes, I did go out and vote on June thirteenth, and fifteen-point-seven percent said no. And so this is what we really wanted to know, like who, why did you come out? Why didn't you come out? So the first question we asked after that was, if you didn't vote, why not? And then you'll see there on that executive summary, I just calculated in percentages for you, knowing that some people could respond in more than one way. And then if you remember back at the first reading, there were like four emerging themes, and then several like one-offs where people had checked other and typed in their own comments. So what I've been doing since that last presentation was going back and coding that data because although people typed in open-ended responses, some of them fit into some of the other categories. So the top reason, based on the one hundred and eleven responders who said that they didn't vote, the top reason was that I support schools but couldn't bring myself to vote for a tax increase. And then the second reason was that I didn't know what the vote was regarding, or some other sort of response that said I was confused, or I didn't know what information was what, or I just don't trust the process. So they chose not to vote. Thirteen-point-five percent of these one hundred and eleven responders said that they were out of town, or I'm sorry, out of time. So they were planning to vote on June thirteenth and for whatever reason got sick, got injured, got caught up at work, they were not able to vote on that day. And then eleven-point-seven said that they were out of town, and some folks, seven-point-two percent, said they didn't think it mattered. And that could have been because they didn't think it was, they thought it was going to pass, or because they didn't, it never passes on the first vote, so they didn't think they needed to come out and vote. So the next question that folks were asked for that, if you did vote and you supported the budget, why? And so again, in cleaning up some of this data, people would say, I didn't vote here, so the percentages aren't going to equal a total of a hundred percent when you're looking at it, and some people also checked more than one response. So I just gave you the top three responses, and eighty-two-point-nine percent of the people who voted and supported the budget said that they understood that the tax increase would be three-point-four-nine percent and felt that it was reasonable. Fifteen-point-four percent of the respondents, and there were four hundred and twenty-eight to this question, said that they were unclear on the tax increase but voted yes to support the schools. And then another one that emerged in the individual comments was this concern about the long-term ability to support our schools or to fund our schools. And there were different variations of what those responses looked like, but I coded them in this category. So the next thing we wanted to learn about was if you voted but you did not support the budget, why? And there were a hundred and ninety-six responses to this question. And so again, remember there, if you're going back to who didn't vote, the number was much lower than that. There were only, or there were a hundred and thirteen people who didn't vote, but some people checked more than one response, so just to kind of help you make sense of the numbers when you're looking at that. So the number-one response, at fifty-six-point-six percent, was that I knew the tax rate was estimated at three-point-four-nine percent but felt that it was too high. The second most popular response was that I'm against any tax increase at all, and that was twenty-six-point-five percent of the respondents. The third response was a combination of either I was frustrated with some other school-related issue or some other town-related issue. And some folks would say things in, when looking at this data, that for example, oops, I'm sorry, that they felt like they, they didn't, they think the town is spending too much as a whole, but the only place they get to have a voice is on the school budget. And so they're saying no for that reason and other reasons as well. And then the fourth response was that the red signs that stated seven-point-four percent increase around town influenced my vote, and that was fourteen-point-two percent of the respondents to that question. The next question was, how could we best communicate and share accurate budget information with you prior to the next school budget vote? And so seven hundred and, all responders to the survey responded to this question, so there were seven hundred and twenty responses. The number-one, this data hasn't really changed much from what it was when we were looking at the preliminary data, except the percentages are different. So number-one, publish information in the Scarborough leader. Seventy-six percent said that is the best place for us to be doing it. Fifty-two percent said Facebook. Forty-eight percent said mail information to my house, and then thirty percent said do television interviews with local news channels. And so then the part that I found really interesting were not only the one-off responses that people would type in, but at the end, there was an opportunity for people to just open-endedly type in any additional comments. And two hundred and thirty-four responders chose to type in some comments there. And I originally was going to print all of the responses for us, but it was like a hundred and twenty-eight pages with, you know, having all of the data. So I think that that would be something that's really important for us to review as a joint town council, school board, finance committee, but just couldn't bring myself to hit the print button for all those copies. But we do have that available, and both of the finance chairs have that, so, and so do the, so does Councilor Baybine and School Board Chair Kelly Murphy. So we can share that electronically. I think that's probably the best way for us to look at that. But I think that already this has given me some ideas about how to improve communication. There's still some things, some questions that were reoccurring. For example, why does school spending keep going up if enrollment's declining? And so that, to me, is something that we can provide evidence and answers to when you look at our enrollment data. Although it is lower than it was years ago, it is actually starting to increase, and it is exceeding the projections of the long-range enrollment projections that we did with planning decisions. So that's actually an interesting data point that I monitor monthly and share at the school board meetings monthly, so we can get that information out to folks in a really user-friendly way. And then I also think that throughout this process, obviously, I have learned a lot, and I'm continuing to learn as we get to the next referendum vote. So I'm keeping myself a little journal of different ideas and things to think about and ways to communicate better. So I think the comments that you see here also give us some lessons in how we can better connect with our community and better serve them ultimately at the end.
Great.
So that's the survey in a nutshell.
Any questions or clarifying questions from councilmembers? Great. Thank you very much. So, please. And if I could have a motion on order number seventeen dash oh sixty-three, the second reading of the fifty-year two thousand and eighteen municipal school budget. Is there a motion?
No move.
Second. And for tonight's discussion, the council has, as is customary, councillors have submitted in advance for proper languaging any amendments that they chose or wanted us to approach and discuss. And so the councillors do have, I think it's four, one, two, three, four amendments that have been proposed. One of them comes from our joint, our joint council meeting, which is the First Amendment, and then there's several others. So we will take them in order, and I will make the first motion if we would accept amendment number one. I'm not going to read the entire order, but under the, be it further ordered that the town budget is hereby amended to be reduced by seventy-one thousand dollars. Recommended target adjustments are as follows: twenty-two thousand three hundred dollars from planning, wages, and benefits; twelve thousand three hundred dollars from human resources, wages, and benefits; eight thousand four hundred dollars from public works, wages, and benefits; eight thousand dollars from benefit adjustments, and twenty thousand dollars from capital projects within community services. For a net operating budget of thirty-two million five hundred and eighty-nine thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars, resulting in the local share for the municipal budget, the sum of eighteen million one hundred and sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars. And if there is a second, second conversation, just for a public overview, if you didn't get a chance, we did have a workshop of the council as a whole. The manager came forward with these recommendations, which are non-programmatic, it's purely administrative. They were the least painful in being able to come to those recommendations, and if I can summarize, I believe that most of them were a result of adjustments and timing within the budget based upon new hires for key personnel, and the changes that result from that. Anything that you would like to add to that?
No, the only addition to that would be delaying a capital project for carpet placement. That's something this council perhaps will take up in future years.
Any comments from council, questions? Councilor Rowan.
I think, I think that, you know, we discussed this at length at the workshop last week. It seemed like they were pretty reasonable adjustments, and I feel like the consensus was there that this was reasonable and appropriate.
Councilor Foley.
Yeah, I would agree. These seem like pretty mundane changes, and, you know, my original position was that we not dip into the municipal budget at all, as people are aware. But as long as we were, you know, my preference probably would have been to go into some things where I think we may have missed out, and things we could have done differently. But I also appreciate the work that Tom did on this, and, you know, these are cost savings that we would have recognized anyway. So it doesn't, doesn't really change, at least what we're able to offer for the most part for services for the community. So from that regard and from that perspective, I appreciate that.
Councilor Donovan.
I support it because I think sharing the burden with the schools is appropriate, and I support it because they're non-controversial. And therefore, don't raise issues outside the goal that we're seeking to achieve, which is to contribute some cuts that would thus not have to be borne by the schools.
Councilor, sorry.
I'm looking at you. I didn't, no, no, it's fine. I just kind of echo what has been said. I mean, we did have a good conversation about this in our workshop. I know at the first reading, I was uncomfortable necessarily opening the municipal budget without a better understanding of what types of items we were talking about. And as, as other councillors have suggested, these seem to be things that are more timing issues, really aren't going to impact any delivery of essential services for the town. So I'm also comfortable with, with moving forward with this, this motion.
Great. Any other councillor? Councilor St. Clair?
Sure. I also will support this. I'm, you know, I'm concerned that while I realize that these are what we're calling mundane budget cuts, and that they aren't going to have a large impact on the town at this point. I'm very concerned about what happens if we don't pass again. And I'm worried about not only us, but the, I know the school board has a large task in front of them. And I just think that we really need to get the word out and start working towards this as a, as a unit, as a whole, and as a team approach. Because I don't want to see another round of this happening.
If there are no other comments, all in favor of the motion, and that is unanimous. Thank you. Proposed amendment number two is, I will read this since I'm the one that proposed it. Under the section, be it further ordered, the change is, be it further ordered that in the event that Scarborough School Department receives more state education subsidy than the amount included in its budget, that pursuant to section, and there are a lot of Js, J, 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 dash, four. Of the state biennial budget, that fifty percent of the increase in state education subsidy be allocated to lower the local contribution to the total cost of funding education, and thereby provide property tax relief for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen. And the remaining fifty percent be allocated to the school capital reserve fund pursuant to Title twenty dash A, M R S A, one-five-six-nine-zero, dash, A, one. If there's a second, I will explain.
Second.
Purpose. Thank you. So in reading the legislative kind of direction from the budget approval, really the, the budget, just to kind of break it down from what I understand, is that forty-eight million dollars has been additionally allocated for this fiscal year across the board for all the state, and a hundred and fifteen million, I believe.
Fourteen.
Hundred and fourteen million next year. We do not know what our portion is going to be from either one of those based upon the formula, so there's presumably some amount that's coming. But that legislation also gives specific direction under two sections, A and B. The first section says that fifty percent of the allocation must go to lower the local property tax related to the cost of education. The second section has three subsections that says that the remaining fifty percent should be allocated in one of three categories. It can either be used in the current cycle to increase, to increase services, and therefore cover costs, additional costs. It could be put into a reserve fund, and based on what I understand, that must be a capital reserve fund. Or the third is that it could actually be allocated to lower, to be allocated and used to lower existing funding for education, meaning additional property tax relief. I'm proposing the fifty-fifty because that was the original intent of the budget negotiations and discussion that we had with the school board. I think it's also in good faith with what the public has come to understand that we need to be. And I don't believe that a hundred percent of this should go to lower the property tax. If anything, the relief is depending on the amount, given some of the capital projects that could be coming forward in the next couple of years, or at least next year. I think there's a technology refresh coming up that's pretty substantial. This is a nice savings that will go into a capital reserve that can be used to fund equipment or fund other projects within the school department. And keeps within the intent of what the joint finance committees initially proposed and sent out to the voters. So that's the logic behind the proposal. Questions and comments from council? Councilor Chiazo?
Yeah, well, I, I appreciate the amendment. It doesn't sound like we have a whole lot of options at this point. I'm yet again disappointed with the reaction from Augusta because not only did they not listen to the public and support fifty-five percent or the surcharge, but they're now mandating that any additional funds that we get have to go towards tax relief, which again caps our ability to be fiscally responsible. I supported the one hundred percent going to the fund balance for the specific reason that it was a tangible number that we knew about, and we could reasonably and clearly predict what number that was going to be for next year and use that appropriately. So I'm going to support the amendment, only because it's really not, you know, it's, it's a halfway compromise, which I can respect and appreciate. I certainly wouldn't support anything more than that. I certainly wouldn't support anything more than that going to property tax relief this year. Who knows what will happen next year, but at least we'll have the reserves or the extra, should we get more money, to be able to address that issue next year with a tangible number when we know what the revenue sharing is going to be.
Just that's an important point. The requirements that Counsel Baymind elucidated do apply for the second year of the biennial as well. The difference will be is that you'll have knowledge of what the, what those amounts are and be able to make some more informed decisions perhaps.
Counsel Rowan?
It's not clear to me how next year that's going to be, happen from a practical matter, because it'll be a new budget that will be, have new expenses associated with it, so I'm not sure exactly how they're going to dictate that this pool of money goes toward property tax relief, but we could, you know, it doesn't have any impact on limits to spending, so it doesn't make any sense. I think that, I love the idea that this, that we're sharing with, for property tax relief, I like it, but my concern is that we're taking two bites at property tax relief by bringing this in, so that we're doing, you know, we're cutting three hundred and seven thousand dollars from the budget and we're doing fifty percent toward property tax relief. You know, I wish we had more information today, tonight, so that we can make rational decisions, so I, but I feel like we don't have a choice about this particular amendment. This is what we have to do, because this is what the statute says we have to do. So I have an amendment coming later, which will, which I'll talk about at the time, but for the moment, I'm going to support this amendment.
Counsel Foley?
Yeah, I, for many of the reasons stated by Counsel Rowan, I'm going to support this amendment as well. I actually would love to see us take that approach in the future or consider thinking more around aligning it to our one-budget, one-town concept, and that would be a two-thirds, one-third split, because I think it's a consistent piece that the community could understand and get behind. I understand we can't, we don't even, and I'm not really appreciative of the fact that we don't have the control over what we want, how do we want this to go. I'm not, I'm not concerned if we get below three percent, if we get closer to two-point five and two percent overall, I'm going to be extremely happy and I'm going to feel much more confident that we're going to be successful in getting our budget passed this time, because frankly, I'm concerned that even at three percent, I don't want to go to around three. So anyway, that's where I'm on this.
Any other councillor?
Yeah, I think I just, you know, kind of echo the same comments. We don't have a lot of choice. I think this is the right thing to do, and just by symmetry or, it's kind of ironic, this is where the joint finance committees had kind of gotten to originally, so there's some real symmetry to this, but we'll support this at this point.
Counsel Donovan?
I will support it. The new budget law does appear to mandate that at least fifty percent of the funds that were provided by the new budget be used for tax relief in the present year. We just found that out today. Therefore, our hands are tied in that regard. I share Counselor Chieso's concern that we've got some very difficult budgets ahead, saving as much money in fund balance once we get down to the two, two-and-a-half to three percent range, which we're at now, is the prudent, fiscally responsible thing to do so as to protect schools and their programs in the years to come. And I'm very concerned about next year's budget, so if we had the right to do it, I would make a hundred percent of the money go to fund balance, but that doesn't appear to be the case.
Thank you. Other comments?
Just in terms of clarity as to what those amounts are, I don't quote me exactly, but I think the Department of Education does have a timeline by which they need to report out to all communities what the effect of this is, and it's quite likely, and I think possible, that that number will be known before the validation vote on the twenty-fifth. Of course, the question it begs is how do you communicate that out? But with certainty, what you've done so far by way of amendment is brought the projected tax rate increase below three percent for sure, and it's likely to get better. The question is how much, and how do we communicate that, should we know that before the vote? That will be something we should perhaps take up at a later date.
Any other comments? Counsel Rowan?
So I think that, I think that it's a detriment that we will, that we don't know what it is tonight, and we will know about it before we vote, because I think that now we are making, we have to make decisions based on the future that we don't, we don't know what they are. And I would also like to say that it's dependent upon the property valuation when that comes back to you.
Not seeing any other questions, I'm going to call a motion, all in favor, and that is unanimous. Thank you. And Counsel Foley, the next amendment is yours.
I'm good.
If you'd like to present it.
I'm good.
Okay. We're going to skip over that request, and I'll move to, I'll turn it over to Counsel Rowan, if you would like to present your amendment. I'm sorry.
So I, I'd like to bring Counsel Foley's amendment forward.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
I'll second it.
All right. So just to read.
Yeah, nicely done.
This is, this is a, I think, a carefully considered budget order. The motion is to move approval to amend the main motion as amended, to add six thousand dollars to reinstate the additional weekly beach cleaning at Pine Point and to offset these expenses with six thousand dollars in additional revenue from the investment income account, resulting in no change to the net budget.
And there's a second?
I second it.
Okay. Counsel Rowan?
So my explanation is, I think we made a mistake when we cut that second beach cleaning, and I think that if we can offset, if we can restore that and offset it with investment income that we would have realized anyway, I think we ought to, and that should at least be considered.
Any other comments, Counsel Foley?
Well, I obviously will support it. I do, I agree. I think we made a mistake. It is, you know, in the big scheme of everything, it is such a small amount, but it makes a big difference for that community and tourist dollars that come here and tourist dollars that we want coming back next year. So my hesitancy in putting it forward was somewhat to honor what other councillors have expressed around not wanting to reopen controversial cans of worms, so that's part of why I did not offer it, and also, you know, playing with revenue lines and switching things around. But I think it, there's no net change. It's pretty simple, and I think it's the right thing to do, so I will support it.
Counsel Chieso?
If I could, through the chair to the manager, what exactly is the amount in the investment income, and is this a projected amount, or is this a hard, fast number?
Ruth Porter, Finance Director is here, and this is one of the areas that she was confident that our current budget projections are understated. Some of that has to do with recent changes to the Fed interest rate and how those trickle down to us, but these are essentially interest earnings we make on cash we have invested. So this is very comfortably an area that we could increase. I can't quote off the top of my head what that current investment account revenue projection is. I'm sure Ruth could, if you want to know.
That's, it's, I mean, it's, I'm, my, I guess my real question is, you know, is this a projection that is a sustainable projection, or is it something like excise tax that is variable? And if that extra is realized and it's not used for beach cleaning, does it go into the fund reserve? For the fund balance, does it go to which fund balance?
Certainly. It would be, it would be received as revenue that was unexpected and not needed to, so it would become fund balance. Yes.
Okay.
Counsel Hayes?
Yeah, I kind of agree with some of the comments made. I do support this. I, I don't know how technically to add it, is there a way to just to kind of say if needed in this? I mean, we originally thought you didn't necessarily need that second cleaning, so rather than do it if we don't need to, just kind of leave it to the discretion, if possible, but that may be a scheduling issue that gets really difficult.
That's really what it comes down to. What we've done by way of accommodation, unless you do reinstate the monies, we've spoken directly to that beachfront community, and we will do everything within our power short of a regular scheduled service to attend to problems as they crop up, and we'll continue to honor that commitment regardless of what you do here. The difference here is that we'll actually schedule crews, an additional cleaning on Wednesdays in July and August as a matter of the routine.
Counsel Rowan?
I'd actually like to speak to the need. I spent several hours in the water at Ferry Beach on Monday, and you can see the little balls of red algae floating in. I've never seen it this bad, so I would say that it's likely going to be needed based on one person's observance.
Counsel Chieso?
Yeah, I mean, again, I, my concern with this is that, you know, we've already deliberated these issues. There were a whole cadre of controversial, for lack of a better word, issues that we addressed. My concern was be, would be if we reopen this and address that, the other corrections and changes that we made, it's viable and reasonable for someone to come back and say, well, you reinstated that, why don't you reinstate my special program, or what I thought was important that you cut from the budget? So I think from a consistency standpoint, I respect the meaning behind it. I think the way we accommodated that, the original change was that staff would accommodate that as needed. My concern is that if we put it in and schedule it and it's automatically used, you know, whether we need it or not, I'm not so sure that's really viable or necessary, especially when we're, we're nitpicking stuff. I mean, I know it's a, you know, it's a seventy-one million dollar budget and it's six thousand dollars, but again, I think if we can, if we can find a way to adapt and meet those needs without reopening something, then I prefer to do that. So I cannot support the motion, I'm sorry.
Counsel Sinclair?
I'm going to support this without a doubt. I think it's a move ludicrous. The amount of money we spend in some of our beach communities and the Pine Point community came to us and begged us, meeting after meeting, to please help them and put this back in the budget, and I absolutely see no reason why we cannot accommodate that.
Anybody else? Counsel Donovan?
I support solving the problem if it arises. I think that it's a concern, and if it does arise, the town manager and the DPW director have the ability and authority to solve that problem, but I do not support re-debating six thousand dollar items. At this point, we're here to find seventy-one thousand dollars or the cuts, not reopen a broad discussion of debate on items that were fully debated previously. I'm also not comfortable finding another six thousand dollars to offset it, when that money would be received in any case. We would be receiving that money no matter what, and it would be used for fund balance, which is something from a fiscal responsibility point of view, we need to be very conscious of. So I will not support this.
So, to be, to speak of laughs, so it's a ninety-two million dollar total budget all in. To spend as much time on debate around six thousand dollars seems a little bit cumbersome. I have mixed feelings about reopening as well, because this, I think, is an emotional reaction rather than a policy discussion. I think that, at the same time, understanding how the budget process works, the manager does have the discretion to spend on a line item basis, as long as there are allocations within the budget elsewhere, so if he does need that, he does have that authority, and then at the end of the year, we approve those adjustments as part of the regular fiscal year-end and part of the adjustments, so there is a mechanism for that. Again, this is a six thousand dollar adjustment. There is a revenue. Probably going to vote in favor of it because it's been identified. I have a little bit of problem with why it's even here tonight, but that's beside the point. We have got a bigger issue to deal with. Yes, sir.
So not to belabor, now that some people have said that we're spending too much time debating it, but just wanted to bring up one more point, and that is the reason why I think that it was a mistake that we cut it, was we just added it last year, and then we turned around and we pulled the rug out from underneath that community with their, with that extra cleaning that they've been asking for for quite a long time, and I feel it's needed.
Any other questions or comments? Not seeing any, all in favor of the motion. All opposed? Two, five to two. Thank you. Moving on to the fourth amendment, I will turn this over to Counsel Rowan.
Thank you. So I wanted to warm up with a, with a controversial amendment before I launch my next one. So I'm going to give the explanation first and then, and then talk about it, or a brief explanation first, then talk about it, and then make my argument during, once it's on the table. So as I stated earlier, I think, I think that if we're adding the fifty percent share to reduce the property tax back in, that, that now that we know that the legislature has acted and that there is significant revenue coming for the current budget cycle, which is something we didn't know during the first vote, and we didn't know during our first reading, but we know that now. We don't know what the number is, but we know that it's coming. And so therefore, I feel like the appropriate, that it's inappropriate to be cutting the education budget, or the town budget for that matter, when we have more revenue coming, when I feel like the, the budget went down at first vote from, because of the revenue with the, we saw the signs, seven point four percent, it was about the net revenue, which was largely due to the loss in revenue. Well, now that revenue's been restored, and I feel like when it goes to the voters, that number will be significantly lower, and therefore we can put the budget back out to the voters at the same level that it was originally. And so the, the change, it changes, it changes the whereas clause, the first, excuse me, the fourth whereas clause, to say that whereas the state biennial budget was approved on July fourth, two thousand and seventeen, and such budget includes one hundred and sixty-two million in additional state subsidy toward the cost of K through twelve education, forty-eight million of which is designated to fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, however, the exact dollar amount of additional subsidy for Scarborough is not known in this time. Now therefore be it ordered, that in view of this additional funding, no further reduction to the town, excuse me, to the school or town budgets are likely required to reach the town council's tax rate increase goal of three percent or less. Crosses out a bunch of stuff, and then it says be it further ordered that the original budget be put back to the voters for further consideration as a result of the additional state subsidy, and will likely produce a projected property tax rate increase of two-point-nine-nine percent or less.
Is that in the form of a motion?
That is in the form of a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
And just for clarification, for the public who don't see our documents, the sections that he said there's a lot of line-throughs is actually everything that was primarily in the First Amendment, so all of the line items that we identified for the adjustments on the town side will be stricken, as well as the be further, the actual two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand that's identified, and the first be it further ordered, that would be stricken as well. So just for clarification, those are the, the impact of what he has asked for. Counsel comments? Counsel Rowan?
So there are a number of reasons why I feel like this is, this is a valid argument to make. You know, again, we're going to see a significant revenue from the state. We don't know what it is, but for the sake of comparison, last year, when the initial budget projection came, when the initial subsidy was calculated, Scarborough was originally going to receive three million eighty-nine thousand and change. Then the state legislature toward, I think the April timeframe, I don't recall exactly, but they put twenty million dollars in, in addition to the original biennial, and then the resulting tax increase was three point five, excuse me, GPA subsidy turned out to be three point five million dollars, excuse me, three point five eight eighty-nine and change. And the, so if you look at, based on last year's formula and, and last year's funding, when they put in twenty million dollars, we got a half million bucks. So if you use the same ratio and you say, okay, well, they're putting in forty-eight million dollars, therefore, we should see something on the order of one point two million dollars. Now, we're, based on the governor's formula that he put out with his proposed budget in January, which is still the only thing that we have to work with, we were a minimum receiver to the tune of seven hundred thousand dollars in the hole. The budget that was passed two days ago, yesterday, at the, at the state level, also made some changes to the formula, but they were different than the governor's changes. So we don't know, again, what the impact of those formula changes will be, but it stands to reason that somewhere between five hundred thousand and one point two million dollars are coming into the town Scarborough in terms of revenue, which if you, again, not that I agree with the methodology of the signs that were put out around town, but the seven point four percent number would be greatly reduced with, with that type of revenue increase, even if you split it fifty-fifty. And just to explain why I don't agree with that, I think that, that, the reason that I think that's the wrong number to look at is that the the wrong number to look at is that the argument's been made that that net school budget represents the taxes that have to be raised to fund schools. And my point, and the point that I made at first reading, was that that would only be true if we had stagnant valuation and if we had property taxes as our only source of non-taxable revenue. So it's the sum that we have to raise at a local level, but it doesn't account for the non-education revenues, which are up over $650,000 in this budget, the homestead exemption reimbursements, which are up $125,000 in this budget, the business equipment tax exemption, which is up $40,000 in this budget, the state municipal revenue sharing, which is up $50,000 in this budget, and the most important factor that it ignores is the projected valuation growth of, at the midpoint, $49 million, which would generate $812,000 in new tax revenue. And it's important to note that this valuation growth is the biggest factor in our declining GPA allocation. The other argument in favor of minimizing the school cut is that we'll no longer be a minimum receiver. And so we're going to be right back on that, you know, slippery declining slope of declining GPA allocation on an annual basis. And so therefore, I think that it's important that we, you know, hold back funds for future years.
Other comments? Counsel Chiazo.
Just making a couple of quick notes. So, very compelling argument, Counsel Rowan. In spirit, I agree with it 100%, but I think the challenge that we faced as a finance group and as a council and as a town is, a goal we had was predictable and sustainable tax increases. And I think, you know, to your argument, using, you know, the same ratio doesn't really apply because the formula has changed, and we really just don't know what's coming from the state. And I think we also have to look beyond the ideology to the reaction from the vote. And I think that by not making any adjustment at all to the budget, while I would support that 100% personally, I think that's not necessarily going to help us garner favor with the public and get this vote passed, this budget passed like we need to. So I just think there's way too many intangibles right now, there's too many things in flux. I think at this point, we're going to deliver, our goal was 3% or less, and I've said to a T from the very beginning, if it's 3%, in good years it's 3%, and in bad years it's 3%, because it's predictable and sustainable and consistent. And I was hoping that that's what the reserve funds would allow us to do, to act as that buffer, so that we're not continuously reacting year to year on what the state does, that we delay, one of our goals was to try and project out a year or two. So if we take that additional revenue, put it in fund balance, which we could have up until yesterday, we can use that to project for the next year, and we have more of a controlled environment than we do now. So I appreciate the intent, I really do. I can't support that because I think, A, there's no real hard numbers to put behind it, and B, I don't know if that's necessarily going to help us garner more support in the community to pass the budget.
Counsel Hayes.
Yeah, I think I'll kind of echo and agree with Counsel Chiazo, but in the others, I know all of us have worked pretty hard to try to get some detail, and there have been three or four sources that have really said that are closer to it than we are, that they're, just to echo, there's just too many unknowns, there's some formula changes. A lot of people are saying, we've heard lots of numbers kind of put out there, but it's really hard to know where that number is going to be. And I think, I think the town manager made reference to it, from what I understand, there's a critical variable that will be determined by the Department of Education, but not to the 21st of, they don't have to do it until the 21st of July, which just puts it awful close. And what, if we want to get to yes, I think I kind of echo, I think this is just too much of an unknown. I think if we put it out at this without having those numbers when the voters go to the polls, if you look at the survey results and other things, I don't think that gets us to yes. I think for those reasons, I applaud the thought. If we knew more information, that would be great, but we're looking at a pretty collapsed timeframe, so I couldn't support that as it is.
Counsel Donovan.
I 100% support the sentiment. The last referendum was flawed, but the vote was taken, and the vote has to be honored. I do not want to put us in a position where we risk having a second referendum not adopted. And by not having any cuts from the school board, from the school budget, we run that risk. I'm told that no student services are going to be undermined by the cuts that are occurring, and so I'm supportive of the approach that the school apparently is going to discuss later this evening. And at this point, no, I think we have to honor the vote that some cut has to occur.
Counsel Rowan.
So I just wanted to respond to a couple of points. The, I think the first was that the tax rate be predictable and sustainable. I think that with the split of the new revenue that's coming gets us below the, gets us below the 3%, comfortably below, even if we don't have the $307,000. The other thing I just wanted to point out was, was on May 4th, the Joint Finance Committees tasked the managers, the town manager and the superintendent, to cut an additional $250,000 so that we can get down to a 3.49% tax increase. After we passed our bond funding, that increased, and I don't recall the numbers exactly, but it was a $192,000 cut for the school, $127,000 cut for the town. In order to get there, the school department cut supplies budgets, they cut field trips, they cut textbook budgets, they cut professional development for their teachers, they cut a foster grandparent, they cut a high school math teacher, and they cut enrollment in the summer reading academy. And this is at a time where our, when you look at, the handout that was passed out at our last meeting, our teacher salaries in 2016, 2017, if you look at those with a college degree and 10 years of experience, they get paid about $83,000 in Portland and about $53,000 here in Scarborough. Master's degree of 20 years in experience, they also get paid $83,000 in Portland, which sounds a little, anyway, they get paid $66,000 here in Scarborough. So I want to point out that we're already behind some of the other towns. And this lists about eight other towns in the area that have significantly higher wages for teachers than we do.
Counsel Foley, you're next.
Yeah, I would echo what others have said, I appreciate the sentiment. Timing is sometimes everything. If we had had knowledge, you know, a week ago, you know, one of the things, I'll be honest, that has been frustrating for me or that I'm concerned is that I haven't, I don't know what, where the Board of Education has come up with their 236. So I'm going to stay tonight and listen because I'm curious to know. Those things would influence how I feel about this perhaps, knowing in advance what they are going further with in their cuts. But because I don't have that knowledge, I really feel strongly, another thing I've heard, you know, a lot of rhetoric around, you know, the state not honoring the vote of the 3% in funding education the way they've been mandated to do, I feel like we have to do that at the local level as well. And part of that is really listening to our voters, and our voters did say no. And I fear if we have no cuts, I'm trusting that the Board of Education has been thoughtful and not harming as much as they could. And I would also just say, this is, in some ways, it's, for me, I'm looking at it like this is a lottery win. You know, if I won $10,000 tomorrow, I could go and take an extravagant trip and that $10,000 could be gone, or I can take that $10,000, pay down some of my other bills, and put it to save for a rainy day. And so we're lucky we're getting anything. I think we should be planning always as if we are minimum receivers, and then when we get money back, move, be able to move things forward in that way. So I can't support it, I appreciate it.
Counsel Rowan.
So I just wanted to react to one comment that Counsel Foley made, and that was that if we plan, if we act as if we're minimum receivers, and then when we get money, we use that to move forward, well, we got the money. And so I think we should be making that investment at this point and trying to move it forward. I agree, the timing's awful. I hate that we won't know until July. I think that we can make better decisions if we had facts, and we don't have them today, but we will have them at the time that we go to the polls. And if, you know, if we're sitting here with an additional, you know, million bucks coming to us and a $236,000 cut in the school, I think we risk also having it not pass the other way.
Counsel Sinclair.
Counsel Rowan, I would support this wholeheartedly if we had even a sound whisper of what we were getting. Today I saw five, from five different sources, five different groups of numbers, and it was nauseating. It, to me, shows how horrible our communication is, or how terrible Augusta is handling our schools and their budget. I think it's unfair because they're now all on vacation because they are cheering because they passed their budget, but we still don't know what we're getting for numbers and we're here. And to me, that's just maddening. Today, it was just, today, I just, I don't know, it was sad because in my heart, I don't want to see these cuts. I don't want to see the cuts from the municipality side, and I certainly don't want to see those cuts that we already saw, that you read off and mentioned. When I sat down and looked at those first $250,000 cuts, it made me sick to my stomach. And sometimes I wonder if the people that are being as critical as they are actually look at where the money is coming from, not just the bottom line. I don't know. I don't know if they take the time to do that. I think it's just, it's almost like no matter what we do, we're never going to win, we're never going to make everybody happy. It's painful for me to not see this actually, for your motion to not move forward, because I believe in it. I think it's, in my heart, the right thing to do because I believe that we're going to come in under 2.5. I think we are. And I don't think it's going to be because of Augusta. I just, I think it's going to come from us. We keep saying, year after year, we have a huge problem with Augusta, and yet, we're saying it again this year. And I don't know, I don't know how to fix that. I hope, I hope that the good people out there that are criticizing us and telling us that our numbers are bad and we're bad people and we must not care, I hope that they take a little time and go see Tody and take out some election forms and run for office, because maybe they can fix all the things that we're so terrible at fixing. So I, I just, I think it's just important to give you credit for doing, for sticking your neck out like they're, because you probably knew that it wasn't going to pass coming into this, and you fought for it, and that's not an easy thing to do as a counselor. So I really commend you for that, and I really wish I could support it. But I'm nervous, I'm really nervous that if this were to pass and we were to ignore the voice of the voter, it would be a horrible thing, and it's not, it's something I said I would never, ever do. And at this point, we have to respect the people that took the time to vote.
So before I come back to you, I'd like to speak, because that way maybe, we do have four minutes about, so if I can add some comments and then maybe we can end with your final comments, if there's anything I say that you'd want to add. Counsel Rowan, I think that this is probably one of the best amendments that we should have had maybe a couple of meetings ago. In fact, I recall making the statement that the roller coaster that we've been on has really been two ends of a very wide spectrum, or a pendulum swing, in which, for me personally anyways, starting off as a joint member of the Finance Committee, back in the committee process, suggesting at that time that the entire cut or adjustment should come from education, and we did that before the referendum, and saying the other end is that after the referendum question didn't pass and based upon what we didn't know, we should be putting back out the same budget once we have the numbers from Augusta. So I commend you because it's exactly on one end of the spectrum that I was thinking and was comfortable with, and in fact, the net effect is probably going to be what Counselor Sinclair said, I think it'll be a little higher than 2.5%, but I think it's going to be well below what our original goal was. The problem that I have is that it goes to the confidence of the process that we've undertaken, the dialogue that we've had with citizens, the impact of the citizens' vote, and I think that they need to have confidence in that process. I think the conversations we've had are meaningful, and I think that the adjustments that have been at least recognized on the town side, and from what I understand on the school side, will have minimal impact, at least I know on the town side will have no impact to services. So I see that there's still a net, net benefit to that. The only problem that I have, and not with this amendment, is I agree about the process as Counsel Sinclair. We started off in full agreement between both boards, in which we were going to accept the notion that we are a minimum receivership. For us to react in somewhat of a knee-jerk reaction, because now we're getting more money from the state, seems to have dismantled some of that joint process that we've undertaken, because that's why I supported the budget at the amount that it was. And by the way, I didn't like the full amount, but it came to the compromise, because one of the things I have learned on this counsel is that we have to find that compromise. Augusta might not do that and put us through hell as they have in the past month, but we need to find the compromise for our citizens because it impacts them directly and immediately. So I hope that you will respect the fact that I won't be able to support the amendment, but I do appreciate it extremely very much. Counsel Rowan.
So I'd like to thank everyone for their kind comments. I wish I could thank you for your support, but clearly that's not going to be the case. But I would say that what's different is just the context. So the context is that now we know that there's different funds coming, and at the time of the vote, we should, we will likely know the amount that we're going to be receiving from the state in GPA allocation. I think that, I think I would disagree only to the extent of the, what I'm thinking the impact is going to be, I think we're going to be well under 2.5% with the tax increase this year, and I think that's wonderful, I'm thrilled by that. But I feel like I'm concerned with the, what school board is going to have to do at their next meeting, and I'd like to not force them to do that. We don't know what that's going to be. I also will stay tuned, and with that, I yield the floor.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments, move the motion, all in favor of the amendments. Please raise your hand. That's one, all opposed. I'm sorry, two, I apologize, Counselor, all opposed. That is five, thank you. Now back to the main motion as amended. Are there any other comments? Not seeing any, all in favor of the main motion as amended?
Roll call.
Oh, I apologize, it's a roll call vote.
Counsel Chiazo?
Yes.
Counsel Hayes?
Yes.
Counsel Sinclair?
Yes.
Counsel Foley?
Yes.
Counsel Rowan?
No.
Counsel Donovan?
Yes.
And Chairman Baybine?
Yes. And not seeing any other action items, I have one announcement before taking a motion to adjourn. Absentee ballots start tomorrow at Town Hall during regular business hours and go through the 20th of this month. The regular election is on July 25th, and if there is no other business, I will entertain or accept a motion to adjourn. Second? All in favor, and that is unanimous. Thank you.